Hey, everybody. Look where we're at. Town hall meeting. Few people here. Anyways, welcome back to the YouTube channel, Living the Country Life with Thomas Collins. We're gonna get in here and see what's going on. How you doing, Mr. Don? How you doing? This is Robert. So, what we're doing tonight, talking about. Coming along on that RV park, huh? Kinda empty. Yeah, I was surprised. I know, so. Get comfortable, she.
Huh?
I said, we can get comfortable, right?
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if I need to move in, I'll move in, but that's where you can scoot over if you need to. Where's the car? There it is.
6:59, I don't know. They're not right.
Place looks really good.
We have placed some agendas on the table up front, if anyone would like a copy to know what we're talking about this evening. We've also put a copy of the minute packet in the binder here, where anybody can just take a look at it, till it's official, and then we'll take it.
Let's count it down, nine. Four, three, two, one, metameric seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, let's call a meeting of orders. First, you want to start with a prayer, is there anyone on the board who would like to be?
Yes, Ms. Troy. I thank you Lord for looking over the town as we move forward with this new agenda. Bless all the people that are here tonight, and that they're doing the right things for Otter Creek, and through Jesus Christ, and we pray, amen.
Just going to the prayers, reflect the allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit.
And to the Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Moving into roll call. Don Severino. Gail Lamb.
Present.
Treese Granger, present. Then Fajin.
Present.
Russell Meeks.
David.
And the first thing we got is to approve the agenda. Do I hear a second to approve the agenda?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. And if everyone looked over their bills? Can we have a motion to pay the bills?
How did we get a legal fee for Norman Pugit for billing and zoning? Had we hired an attorney or helped him?
No, we sought legal counsel.
That was without approval of the council.
Yes, we did. Our letter said that the county commissioner of Levy County was ending their interlocal agreement with us on the 40th for immediate attitude, therefore, therefore, we did our billing and zoning department. And because right now, we do not have any attorney on staff, we needed, uh, a guide as to make sure we're going properly. We have, um, things hooked at all the forms that we will be using, and as far as building permits, issuing them, um, so, um, he answered my questions that I had.
They can hear.
So, who come up with all that stuff? Why wasn't that discussed in an open meeting?
Because you knew we were ending it. You knew that.
I knew the, I knew the, it was, the county was ending, yes. Uh, this inheritor tried to end it early, so he could cut out his, uh, uh, billing permits and, uh,
No, because.
Impact fees.
That is right. Russell, I'm not gonna, I guess, because I didn't.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm not arguing with you anymore.
No, you're not.
Go ahead, go ahead. I am not arguing with her. She has not owned this city council.
Oh, you're holding.
You are arguing with her, Russell.
If you just. Have your raised voice, or no one can hear what's going on. I don't.
You never do, you're not the problem. Okay? We sought legal counsel because of the situation with you and everybody else. We sent a letter to the, uh, Department Building and Zoning, saying, okay, as of August 15th, we would do our thing. Yes, we sent it to the wrong department, and we inadvertently did, okay? We sought legal counsel who said it was immaterial, we sent the letter to the wrong department. Yes, I apologize to everybody. I did, I made a mistake, but I said, okay, let's fix it, and I did. The agreement was the board of county commissioner and us, not the building and zoning department.
But regardless, though, he did write the code of ethics.
Actually, we didn't.
But we, we all acknowledged that. And I'm sorry, I mean, all we can do is go forward. We did, we got all the, all the, um, applications were reviewed by legal counsel that said, yes, we should change broccoli, use blocks in same format, and we're going forward with that. Now, as far as Jim's project, Jim is not, will ha, not now, not in the future. Will he have anything to do with touching that paperwork that comes in this audit? It will be, um, the building inspector will become for him to me, I will review it as upon his approval, and we will go forward. I have a list, and I wonder who walks through that door? They will all be treated the same. If Jim is aware that he's already been told, he can't touch anything on his project because it's self-serving and a conflict of interest. Therefore, he's just, he had, he's going through the steps just like anybody else. And I'm making sure that the people that are issuing these permits are the proper people who are giving them, and they're properly handled.
So, you've already hired a billing and zoning official without approval from the council?
If you will listen.
It's on the agenda for tonight, if you write your agenda?
Yes, and legal counsel, Norman Pugit said, well, you are able to hire your own building inspector, as long as they turn their credentials into us, and we can see that, yes, they are certified building inspectors. We don't have to use our own. Jim chose that, but the person that he chose is the one that he has recommended, that we have references to hire, and it was backed by Norman Pugit, because he is also the attorney proceeding, and he's aware of Jack's reputation. So, we have gone forward with his billing, his permit, one step at a time. I have everything that I need, and what's supposed to be in that box. Now, tonight, we will decide that it's on the agenda, therefore, the ones that we're going to hire for us.
I'm not in favor of hiring nobody until we get an attorney sitting right there, so we can get legal with any of the problems.
Noted. Now, listen, if anybody bothered to read the cancellation of the interlocal agreement from the county, it still states that the impact fees and assessments will be collected by the county, because once we do our permitting, it gets forward to the county, so nobody can bypass any of that. There's no hokey business going on. It says so right here in the letter of cancellation.
Well, why didn't we get the, that information?
We would have to ask Mr. Meeks and Mary, why they didn't give you that information.
What would you have done?
The same letter that.
The same letter we found.
We took off this.
This is the letter came in, uh.
Okay, well, you wrote a letter to the county, uh.
I always say, what?
Why didn't we get that letter? And all this stuff is being done, you guys want to be transparent, but you're really being invisible. That's the problem.
Dr. Fox said, I made an error, and I apologize, and I did what I needed to do to fix it.
Errors happen, we all realize that, but, uh, you can't keep us in the dark like this.
I'm not keeping, keeping in the dark.
Of course we are, we get all this stuff here, it should have been emailed to us or something, all this information today.
Sure, and it was emailed to you.
How are we supposed to assess all that stuff, you know? I've been hearing you do it.
You give what email to you.
No, you sent me an agenda, and then.
No, I didn't, I sent you the whole packet.
That whole packet was emailed to everybody.
Yes, I did, yes, sir.
I can check, because I was copied in on the email that has your name, that has his name, that has his name, that has her name. We are all copied in on the same email that had the whole packet.
And you're also told.
And you can come and pick it up if you choose to, but you choose not to.
This is something you bring up every meeting, if you don't get your permission, you have been told several times that your package will be in here available for you a week in advance.
She said, I think it's gonna be emailed to everybody.
It was. It was.
We got two emails concerning the meeting, and none of this stuff was in it. It was this, and, and the, and the financial report.
The agenda was the only thing that was on my email.
Then something's not right, and, uh, we, we are being kept in the dark.
No, sir.
Why would I say that?
If you feel that way, why don't you come down here and pick it up?
Because I, you said you were going to send them.
You carried on about it. You said you wanted to come down here and pick it up. Nobody's locking you out of anything to keep you away from anything. Alls you have to do is either open your email or come pick it up, period. Nobody's hand-delivering it. We've already established that.
That's all I asked before. I got the emails, and I figured that's complete. I come in here, and you got all this other stuff, then, no idea it was gonna be up here tonight, you know? This is, this is, but what I got.
You got email and all of that.
We shouldn't have this, this kind of argument, you know?
Exactly. Did, did Gail get hers in the email?
I got mine, but it was in two different, it was in one, but two different things I had to open to get it. So, that might be what the, could be the problem, not open both attachments. You know what I mean? So, I got one email with two attachments.
You know, the owner, if they can open your computer and get it.
You know, so.
Okay, so I think we're asking for a motion to pay the bills.
To approve the agenda, and we did, we did the agenda, now the bills, yes.
I'm in motion to pay the bills.
Okay, do we have a second to pay the bills?
I second to pay bills.
All right, we have a second. All in. All in favor to pay the bills?
The packet, was that when I counted?
All in favor to pay the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, no.
Okay. Russell opposed, all the rest in favor, motion carries. Okay, then we have an approval of the minutes from September 6th, 12th, and 18th. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Do I hear a second to approve the minutes?
I second it.
All right, we have a second to approve the minutes, all in favor to approve the minutes, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, Russell opposed, motion carries. And now, we're at the public participation. Our members of the public will have three minutes to speak to the council on any one topic. Please remember that the topic needs to pertain to the town, and it needs to be respectful with no foul language.
So, I can do that too, right?
Right.
Say what I gotta say, in three minutes.
Yeah, one hand. See, everybody would have a chance to talk whether you're on the board or in the public. Did anybody in the public have anything they would like to address the board with? Yes, sir?
I see some land clearing over here, and, um, I have some property right next to it, and the level of the ground has been lifted, and I'm concerned about the runoff going to my property. I also was looking for a, um, a building permit of some sort. I didn't see a box out there of any type of building permit or anything. Um, I talked to Jim last month, and I asked him about a building permit, and he explained to me that it was something that was pulled a long time ago, and that somebody in my family knew about it. Well, I've called everybody that I knew that might know about it, and nobody knows about it, so I would like to request, um, a copy of that building permit, and have it posted as it should be, uh, and any, any other information pertaining to that property, or their construction there.
Well, I agree about the runoff, because I let my nephew put a trailer beside me, and I flood.
Yeah, so, um, I don't know how this addressing period works, what I'm supposed to do there, but I'm asking for that. Is there a way that I can request it officially, and then have it put in the records that I'm requesting?
It's dead.
Okay, it's in the record.
It's all over the internet now.
Okay, not concerned by internet, I'm just concerned about the property out here. So, um, I formally request a copy of the builder permit.
Okay.
And all that is pertaining to elect a plant and all of that stuff.
Does Belinda have any of your information? If not, get with her back in the meeting, so we can get your information.
Right, and I'm gonna give you the piece for what the copies are cost, and then let's go.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Was there anybody else? All right. Now, we can move on to the old business. The first thing we have on the old business is the hiring for the clerk position. We had the workshop, and I was here, Jim was here, and Gail was here, and going through the applications, there was no one in there qualified. Uh, Belinda did put in, um, a resume to be interim clerk, until the day arises that we find someone who is qualified. So, everybody decided they would like to go with her to fill the position on an interim basis, until we find someone qualified, rather than just throwing in a warm body, which I advise against. So, do I hear a motion to hire Belinda on an interim basis?
I make a motion to have her.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll say.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries, Belinda is hired for the interim clerk. And for the attorney position, and just basically a status update, we did run an ad on the internet, and in the paper, we did have one gentleman who put in a resume, and then he pulled his resume, so he doesn't want to be part of it, but his fees were quite high anyway. He wanted a $3,000 a month retainer fee, as well as us to pay for a hotel room for him to stay here for the night, when we had meetings and paid his mileage from Jacksonville. So, I doubt that would have been a great contender anyway. So, we're still looking for an attorney. If anybody knows of any attorney who would like to represent us, please give the information to them.
So, since they're scared of this, they're not gonna.
I know, it might be on camera, pretty much.
And now, with our new business, um, Tammy Jones sent over interlocal agreement for the elections. Did everybody look that over? We just need to sign that agreement. Basically, the same thing they did for the last elections, where they oversee everything, they have the canvassing board, they do the training, which the training starts in November. And I know there are.
Is there any for the poll workers?
Yeah, for the whole, all the election stuff, for the clerks, for the poll workers. And, um, there will be new filing requirements this year for any candidates, where they're doing the filing, the financial filing will be done electronically, and they'll be requiring more information, where before, it was just a quick simple form, now, it's gonna be electronically, and they really wanna know a lot more details about your financial information than before. So, that's a new requirement going into play, just. And that's just a side note, besides the interlocal agreement, that there'll be that new, um, filing requirement. But you'll get more information when the candidate stuff, which is usually, I believe, in January, February-ish, where that comes out, where people can run and get all their paperwork.
That time period is coming up pretty soon.
Right.
And we really haven't resolved the problem with the three-way tie.
As far as assigning seats?
As far as, and who's gonna work that one, one-year term?
Oh, yeah, we've resolved that already.
No, you haven't.
We sure did.
How?
It got assigned.
Pardon?
It got assigned to Russell Meeks. We're past that.
I'm sorry, but you don't have that authority to do.
Okay, well, I disagree.
Pardon?
I disagree, and we're past that.
Okay, so what's gonna happen, it's gonna come up whenever, and it's gonna be a, a problem with that, because.
It's not.
You, you can't do that, you should, you know that, everybody here knows, that you don't have that authority, especially since you were one of the three people at that tie.
Anyway, we're past that. So, right now, we're talking about the election requests.
It's one of the big problems of election. Big problem.
There's no problem. So, now, we're talking about the interlocal agreement with Tammy Jones. So, if everybody read through the packet, this needs to be approved and signed to get back to her. So, do I hear a motion that we sign the interlocal agreement with Tammy Jones?
I make a motion that we go with Tammy Jones.
Okay, do I have a second to go with Tammy Jones?
We haven't seen this, how can we?
This is to do the elections, the same as you do every year here. And Tammy Jones is a supervisor of elections, who handles the elections. Do you have someone else to go with besides the supervisor of elections?
Pardon?
Is there someone else to go with besides the supervisor of elections?
No, there's not.
Okay.
But before I vote on.
So, this is what we're talking about.
I'd like to vote on voting for.
Once again, I can't help that you don't open your attachments, I can't do anything about that.
If that was the case, I would, I would say, okay, but that's not the case.
Don, I gave you proof that it went. I showed you the copy of the email where it was sent, and the attachment that I just handed you was the one that was sent with your email. So, other than the agenda, you got all of the paperwork.
Well.
I did, what I handed you was the same thing that was attached to the email.
I certainly hope so. I opened up, looked at those attachments, and was not there.
And when we're done with this.
Well, I'll check it when I get home.
We will come into my office, and I will sit you in my chair, and I'm gonna show you. So, you can see, here's the email that was sent, and here's the attachment.
Let me, let me go to, you know.
Well, I mean, if you're gonna sit here and say you didn't get it, then let me show you. Let me show you.
You just, you gave me these.
But I gave, I sent them Thursday. That's what I'm saying, you got it in plenty of time, you had it Thursday evening, you had it all day Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and Monday, and all day today.
All right, well, listen, I opened up all of them, it wasn't there. I could have made a mistake, but I'm gonna check on that.
I appreciate that, if you would, but in the meantime, if you need to, we will sit down, and I'll let you open it, so you can see it was sent. Okay? I'll be, I'll back up what I said.
I'll double-check that, and if I'm wrong, I can certainly admit that I'm wrong.
Okay.
But, uh, I, I looked, and I knew there was not much here, other than this, and the, uh, and the financial reports.
Okay, well, Dr. Fox said, when you, my chair is always open, you, you come in, you sit down, I'll let you open it, so you can see. So, you can be on the shadow of the house.
I started doing this, must be some malfunction somewhere.
Some, okay, well, just so that you know, it is open.
Well, uh, I mean, the door's open?
The door's open, and I, you can come sit down in my chair, and I'll let you open the email that was sent, so you yourself can scroll down and see all the documents, because I supposed to send, I can't change it. So, you'll know, it, what was sent was the whole package. Now, what you got at home, I can't help that.
We'll go from there.
Okay, so moving on, we do have a motion. Do I hear a second? For the interlocal.
I second it.
We have a second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
I oppose.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay, and the next thing. Under new business is a resolution to change the meeting time.
Must be running out of gas. Still my damn gas off my truck.
Resolution number 2023-05. The resolution of the town of Otter Creek of Levy County, Florida, amending the schedule for the regular meetings of the town council of Otter Creek to the second Tuesday of each month at 6:00 PM. Where currently, it's at 7:00 PM, we're changing it to 6:00 PM. Do I hear a motion to go forward with the resolution number 2023-05 to change the meeting time to 6:00 PM?
What's the reason to change it?
Because the meeting time is very late.
Yeah, you have to take.
It's not good for me.
You have to take in consideration that the lot of, we want more people to come here, and a lot of people work till 5:00 o'clock.
Yeah.
Some later, so what's gonna happen? All of a sudden, they're gonna get home, rush home, well, it's kinda, it's really gonna be counterproductive to what we're trying to do here, with, with having more community input, okay? So, just making it earlier is for, for whose advantage? Not mine? Not, not the, the public?
We're the only people who do.
Who decided that we should do that?
We're the only people who do our meetings so late.
I don't think that's a determining factor as much as not being, not getting here on time, not, you know, people work, we just couldn't all work to you. You know, that's what happens.
One day a month.
We have to take them into consideration.
One day a month. Okay, well, if anybody wants to change the meeting time.
I think it's fine the way it is, it's been that way, and it's that way, been that way for a reason, and the reason is.
Do you agree with anything?
People can get attendance.
Or are you just here to argue?
It's not an argument, it's a dialogue.
Everything is an argument with you, sir. Okay, the next thing on the business to talk about is the grant acceptance information. Back in May, I believe it was, there was, with Fox, to decide on the bids that were put in, there was only one bid put in for each. the bids that were put in, there was only one bid put in for each one was from Midtower. And the other one from Fox, is correct?